Hey Remar nurses, guess what? We are still, we are still at home. And I'm alone right now, but I thought, well, I'm not really alone because I have my Remar nurses and we can study. So we're going to be alone together. We're gonna be alone together right now. It's time for your pop-up study session with the number one NCLEX instructor on this planet. My name is Regina Cowan. Hey, if this is your first time watching a Remar review video, congratulations, you have made it. You have made it to the sweet spot. Because we will be studying from our virtual trainer program. You guys have it, you love it. If you don't have it, what are you waiting for? This is the place to be. Virtual trainer. Actually, we'll be studying also from the companion to the VT. So if you have the virtual trainer, you obviously have Quick Facts. And I was studying this book just a few minutes ago. And I was gonna study with Mark, but he just looked totally uninterested. So I said, you know what? I'm gonna get on, I'm going to study with team Remar nurses, students. So we will be looking at a topic on lead poisoning. Cause that's what I was studying. I was studying lead poisoning. So I'm just going to review. Hey, Tracy, am I saying it right? Or is it just Tracy? It's Tracy has said, finally got my VT book and I love, love, love the VT program. Are you talking about this virtual trainer program? Let me know, are you R in or P in? Okay. Um, so again, we're home. We are getting ready to study. All right, this is our time to study. We gotta stay focused. So I'm just gonna ask you some questions. And this is just what I want you to do while you're studying with me is just think in your mind, do you know the answers? I'd love for you to put them up on the screen if you have them, if you wanna share. But we're just going to go through a topic. And I'm kinda, I'm gonna show you guys how I study a topic when I'm studying from Quick Facts or the virtual trainer program. So this is the five-star Quick Facts that I will be talking about, all right? And again, I hope everybody is doing, I hope everyone is doing well. We're still in the midst of the coronavirus. And as you guys can see, nurses are superheroes. Nurses are on the front lines. Shout out to all of the nurses out there. Donna Richards, thank you Regina and Mark. I am now a Remar nurse. Yes, yes, that's what I'm talking about. Oh my goodness. Um, yes, awesome. This is what, this is what it's about, like getting into this field. This is not a field. Nursing is not a field for wimps. Like you have to be ultra brave, ultra courageous to get into nursing, especially at a time like this, especially at a time like this. So with that being said, if we wanna get into nursing, we gotta study. We have to study. Because even if, even if we know that they're making changes to the NCLEX and reducing the number of questions. And I know some of you guys are taking, taking NCLEX soon. Shout out to Maria. She's still watching even though she's a nurse. Um, even though you guys are taking NCLEX, um, understand you're taking the NCLEX and things are changing, but they said the difficulty level has not changed. So this is a beast of a test. So we're gonna just be talking about lead poisoning today. All right. So come on in. Shout out Philly in the house. I'm representing Ohio. Where are you representing from? Okay, so we're talking about lead poisoning. Um, let me ask you guys this. All right, cause Quick Facts is very straight to the point when it comes to lead poisoning. All right. Um, so the first thing that I wanna ask is lead poisoning. What is the biggest risk factor to someone contracting lead poisoning? What's the biggest risk factor? What do you guys think? Go ahead, in your minds, it should be, it should be populating. You should see a picture of somebody right now. We should, you should see a picture of somebody with lead poisoning. Who is that? Who is that? And don't worry, if you guys have questions, um, you know, about the virtual trainer, anything else like that, always hang out a little bit later and answer your questions. But right now, we're doing a pop-up study session about lead poisoning. So when we talk about the person who is most likely to contract lead poisoning, what age group is that person? Everybody should be thinking of a small child, right? Everybody should be thinking of a small child, um, right now. Because contracting lead poisoning is, um, well, the easiest way that you could get it is by putting what in your mouth? By putting lead-based chips in your mouth, paint chips. And so when you're doing these questions, the Center for Disease Control says that usually children under six years old are most at risk for contracting lead poisoning. And so when I'm doing, um, NCLEX questions, I know that I'm thinking of a very young child. All right, a very young child. I don't in my mind see a six-year-old eating lead chips, um, lead paint chips. But if you have a non-intact paint, right? Um, if you have a non-intact paint, these are clue words that you might see in your NCLEX exam. Non-intact paint chips on the floor. Even if the child is not directly picking up those paint chips and putting them in their mouth, if they are playing amongst that area with their toys, then it is likely that some of that lead will get into their mouth. Yeah, get into their mouth. So, um, and we know that when paint comes off of the wall, it usually comes off as chips. And if you're not cleaning it up every day, that paint can accumulate in corners on the floor. And so if you have a child that is crawling around, then yes, it's very likely that that paint could get into their system. So children under six, most likely to incur this lead poisoning. Now let me guys ask you, let me ask you guys this. Good afternoon, good afternoon, good morning, wherever you're from. All right. Um, oh man, Kristelle. Kristelle says, um, I had to buy a VT for a friend to support her during this time. Wow, so she could focus and take advantage of the board of nursing changes. Wow, thank you so much for bringing her into our family. Thank you. I can't even, that is, that's a friend. You are really a friend. Um, okay, so let me ask you guys this. We're talking about lead chips. We're talking about paint. We're talking about lead poisoning. Um, how about this? Is lead, is lead a chemical or a metal? When we're talking about lead poisoning, are we talking about a chemical or a metal? Okay. And I am studying from the virtual trainer program, the Quick Facts book. Okay. What do you guys say? Is lead a chemical or a metal? Hmm. Have you ever been asked that before? You guys should know this. You guys should absolutely know this from seventh grade chemistry. Right? Seventh grade chemistry, because you can find lead where? On that periodic table of elements. Yes, lead is a metal. Lead is a metal. So think about that when we're gonna talk about the medications to treat lead poisoning, right? Think about what those medications must do. So what is the biggest risk? If a child does, say we have a two-year-old and they're playing amongst non-intact paint chips. And they do, they get lead poisoning. What are some of the organs that will be affected by this metal? What are some of the organs in that child that will be affected by this metal? What say if you guys? There's one, there's, there's a big one that I'm thinking of. But there's, um, there's four that I wrote down. You guys know what it is? All right. And shout out to my West Coast nurses, uh, in California. Yeah, watching. I appreciate you guys. All right. Um, okay, so I see liver, I see kidneys. Yes, those are on my list. Liver and kidneys. And also the brain. Don't forget the brain as well. The brain, the brain, the brain is a big one. And also, lead poisoning can affect the reproductive organs in the child. All right. Um, and so one thing about lead is that it really, it can cross even the placental barrier. So if a mother, if an adult pregnant mother happens to get lead in her system, it can damage, it can damage the fetus as well. Okay. So brain, liver, um, kidneys and reproductive organs. All right, that's what I have on my list. All right. Now, what are the clinical signs? What are the clinical signs that a child has ingested lead? At an amount that is causing, you know, um, changes? What is the, what is the first thing that parents might notice about their child? If you have a two-year-old or a three-year-old, what are you gonna notice about them? How are they gonna be behaving? What do you guys say about that? And it's something I'm looking for. If you have the Quick Facts book, feel free, feel free to turn to the page where it talks about lead poisoning. Some of these answers you'll be able to get right from Quick Facts. And then some of them, I'm, um, I'm improvising and I'm pushing you guys a little bit, um, further. Okay, so yes, the child will have abdominal pain. The child's gonna have abdominal pain. You also may see a decreased level of consciousness. Yes, Quick Facts tells us the child may say, my head is hurting. You know, um, like I have a three-year-old. He may or may not, like, I don't know. I don't know if I would trust my three-year-old's history cause it probably would be very sketchy if he tried to give me, um, how he was feeling. So you have to look at the child. Are they holding their stomach? Are they holding their head? Um, are they, are they interacting with you in the same way? Are they engaged with you? Like, so you'll see that is something very important. Respiratory depression, yes. All right. The respirations are gonna go down. The, let me ask you this. We didn't talk about this vital sign, but what about the blood pressure? Do you think the blood pressure will be up or down with lead poisoning? Blood pressure, what do we say? We said the respirations would go down. Would the blood pressure go down as well? Would the blood pressure go up? What do you guys think? And the answer, let me tell you. The answer about the blood pressure will be an indication of another issue, right? So the correct answer about the blood pressure will indicate that there's another issue going on with the patient. Because remember, I said, um, this lead poisoning will affect the brain. It will affect the brain. So when we have our patients' vital signs in front of us, the respirations will be down, but that blood pressure is going to be up. Yes, the blood pressure is going to be elevated. And typically in children are, is the blood pressure ever up? Like, well, the blood pressure is usually not up in children. We're talking about, we are talking about lead poisoning, um, in the pediatric population. We normally don't see a high blood pressure in children. So yes, Crystal Marie, if that blood pressure is up, that says to me, you know what? My patient may have some increased intracranial pressure, right? Because lead is going to target one of the organs of the brain. So that may also contribute to my patient not interacting with me. The respiratory depression is down. My baby's head might be getting very big, right? The increased intracranial pressure. So, so with all these things happening, right? With all these things happening, very good, the blood pressure's gonna be up. Um, what is the treatment? What do you do? What are we gonna do? Are we going to, you know, and try to induce vomiting? Do you induce vomiting with lead poisoning? Uh, some poisoners, you do want to get that poison out of the system immediately. Is lead going to be one of those poison types? Is it gonna be effective? Okay. Is it going to be effective? What do you guys think? What's the treatment for lead poisoning? Thinking about the point that we already made that lead was a metal. So what do we have to do to get that metal out? Okay. Yes, Rika, Rika has it. She's the first answer that I see. I know there's more coming. I know that there's more coming. But yes, and this is, this is what it looks like to study NCLEX. Because I mean, we're studying from Quick Facts, right? And when you study from Quick Facts, it is very to the point. You guys know that. It is very question and answers. But have a conversation with yourself. Like, don't just say, okay, what is, how do you treat lead poisoning? All right, so we know you can use the chelating agents to do it, right? Um, you can do it, but what does that mean? What does that mean? What, how does it, how does it treat the metal? Because we talked about lead being a metal. So if I have metal in my veins, I have metal in my body, how do I get it out? How, how, by what process does it come out? So we know that, um, the medications, and there's, there's several. I see you guys putting them up here. Shout out, all right? Um, shout out to everybody helping me today with, yes, you have to remove the metal. Lizette, we have to remove the metal. What happens is the medication binds to the metal. It finds it and it binds to the metal. Isn't that a beautiful thing? What we can create, the medications, the synthetic medications that we can create as humans to treat our diseases? So yes, you can give, you can give the, um, chelating agents through IV or you can also give them through oral pills as well. So one or the other. But no, it, so it binds to the metal. Yes, it binds to the metal. But then where does it go? How does it leave the body? Does it just absorb? Do the medications just dissolve themselves? How do they get out of the body? What process gets them out of the body? And this is, um, the same for any type of metallic poisoning. So you could do, like, um, there is lead poisoning. There's also what? Mercury poisoning. And there's one more that I'm, it's, it'll come to me. There's one more that I'm missing that it'll come to me. Oh, arsenic, right? Arsenic, you can get arsenic poisoning and it all leaves the body the same way. Okay. So how does it leave the body? Once the medication is binded to the patient? Does it, do the patient sweat it out through the skin? Do they breathe it out through the lungs? How does it get out? All right. Think about that. I'm looking for the answer before I move on. We're talking about lead poisoning and how it get, how it's out of the, how it gets out of the patient's body? Our pediatric patient, our baby who is suffering. All right, yes. So it is in fact, yes, it is in fact excreted by the kidneys. So it comes out through the what? It comes out through the patient's urine. Okay. So when NCLEX gives you, when NCLEX gives you a scenario, all right? Um, when they give you a scenario and they tell you, this is just a really, um, this is like a guru tip for NCLEX. When NCLEX tells you that a medication causes the kidneys to have to excrete it or get rid of it, that medication or substance can be what? What do we call it when something can be toxic to the kidneys? We call that what? Okay. So, um, when you talk about medications that work for lead poisoning, all of them have the potential to be nephrotoxic. All of them have the potential to be nephrotoxic, all right? Um, and that is just because it is, um, it is the job of the kidneys now to have to excrete something that was not ever meant to be in the body. The body was never meant to, you know, ingest metal. So these things are hard on the body. All right, you know? Okay, so I wanted to say that. Okay, let's talk about, let's talk about this. And this is how do we prevent, how do we prevent a child from having lead poisoning? Complications of lead poisoning? How do we do that? And so for NCLEX, they love to talk about the levels of prevention, the levels of prevention. So if you're presented with this type of question for any subject, any subject, then I want you guys to be able in your minds to think about, okay, if NCLEX says the topic is lead poisoning and we're talking about primary prevention, secondary prevention, or tertiary prevention, I want you guys to give me an example of primary prevention for lead poisoning. What would that look like? Okay. Primary prevention for lead poisoning. Think about what primary prevention is. Okay, think about what is primary prevention? And then give me an example of what you would do as a nurse for primary prevention. So, um, Eka says, avoid living in an old-fashioned structured building. Okay, avoid living. So yeah, I mean, you better move into that new condo. You better get out of those old buildings. Okay, monitor your home for chip paint and know the year the house was built. Okay, yes. Uh, decrease the exposure. Keep the substance out of reach that contains lead. Wash toys thoroughly. Safe environment. Okay, so these things, all right? So when we have primary prevention, primary prevention focuses mostly on education. Yes. All right, we're trying to prevent it from happening. So anything like poisons or poisonings or accidents or falls, primary prevention is education. So you guys says, try to prevent the use of lead-based paint. Crystal says, have the paint checked prior to moving in. Safety, safety, safety. Yeah, so all of these things actually have to do with educating the client. Okay, so I think you guys got that. Now, let's move on to secondary prevention. If NCLEX said the subject, a nurse is doing education on lead poisoning, what are some secondary prevention statements that should be included? All right, so give me secondary prevention now. In your mind, what does, what does secondary prevention even mean? What constitutes secondary prevention? How is it different from primary prevention? Right? So primary prevention, we talked about, primary prevention, um, is preventing it from happening, right? We don't want it to happen. So we do education. Uh, so sometimes primary prevention is immunizations. You know, we don't want the patient to get the disease. So yes, so secondary prevention is, uh, and Anthony, all right, screening the child at an early age. Okay, yes, screening the child at early age. I like that. Screenings is a, is a big one for secondary prevention. Because secondary prevention doesn't apply until really you have it, right? So the goal of secondary prevention is identifying it early on. So it's like, okay, if we have secondary prevention, you probably got it already. So how can we, uh, identify it early and treat it? So what do I have in my notes here? Oh, I skipped a point. Okay, I'll go back. Um, so secondary prevention focuses on the early detection of lead poisoning. And the CDC has devised screening criteria, of course, to determine if a child is high risk. So yes, secondary prevention, screening, testing. Let me ask you this. At what age do we typically screen children for lead poisoning? Oh, mm-hmm. What age do we typically screen children for lead poisoning? So I don't know if you come across this in your studying, but it is a great point to note, uh, for normal milestones, normal evaluations in children. I'm looking for the answer. Okay, yeah, so it honestly depends on the pediatrician, but usually it's one or two years old, one or two years old. So for my children, um, the pediatrician didn't do it till two, but I did see that one years old or 12 months was also a viable option. Let me go back. Oh no, let me not go back. Let me just keep on going. Secondary, so we talked about primary, we talked about secondary. You guys are doing good. Look at this, I don't even know, how long have we been studying? We literally have been studying lead poisoning this entire time. And that's, that's why I'm saying, nobody should tell me that they study all the Quick Facts. You know, that you got all of this studied in six days. There is no way. Because you can really dig down into this content. That's the thing about content. As deep as you wanna go, it can go with you. All right. Um, and so they may do multiple screenings of it, but the first screening initially is done at one and two years old. Cause I see some of you guys saying four years old. And I didn't see that, but maybe they do do it before head start. Okay, all right, let's move on. So we talked about primary prevention. We talked about secondary prevention. How about tertiary prevention? Can anybody give me an example of tertiary prevention for lead poisoning? What do you think? Okay. Tertiary prevention for lead poisoning. All right. Um, think about it. What does tertiary, what is the idea? What is the goal of tertiary prevention? Come on, Remar nurses, we are alone, but we are together. Oh my goodness. Who would have imagined we would be studying at home like this? This is so interesting. Shout out to everybody that is really taking this in stride, right? Yes, you guys are really, we're really doing this thing. Nothing can hold us back. All right, so yes, so tertiary prevention, preventing, I like that, John. Preventing further deterioration. Okay, so give me some examples of that. What, what does that look like? What does that look like? Because the child has it. Um, we may, we may have given the medication a little too late. So now what do we have to do? Okay. Um, so I, I do think that we could do, we definitely could do, um, rehabilitation, probably developmental, um, physical therapy. Because remember, if a child has this, they're probably going to have, um, what? Mental retardation, right? Um, they will have communication delays. And so what would be our tertiary prevention for those things that are already probably taking place? Right, so we're going to encourage the physical therapy, occupational therapy, make sure the child can be as independent as possible. Uh, we also might put the child in special schools where their developmental disabilities could be, um, really addressed and just helping to them to get independence, right? So those are tertiary prevention things that can be done. Now I'm going to kind of focus you guys on the nursing aspect of it. Because those are things that, you know, we want the families to do. We want the families to have that, um, to have that mind frame. So let me go back here and let's do some prioritization. Let's do some prioritization. Let's throw, throw in the mix of prioritization here. So here's my question to you guys. If a child has been exposed to lead, all right? Let me set the scene. You're working as a telehealth nurse. Cause that, this is what NCLEX will do. You're working as a telehealth nurse and a mother calls in frantic and said her child has been exposed to lead. What is the priority response of the nurse? You, I'm gonna give you two options. Do you have what's going on? So you're on the phone with a mom. She's saying, my child just has been exposed to lead. I'm sure of it. I'm sure they ate these paint chips, cause they're all gone. I don't see them anymore. Um, so do you, one, tell the mother to call the ambulance? Or two, tell the mother to call the poison control center? Which one are you gonna tell the mother to do? All right, which one? I see you guys put the answers up. I see the answers, all right? Think about it though, think about it. You have a mother on the phone frantic. The paint chips are gone because the child ate them. Should you call the ambulance? Or should you call the poison control center? Which one? Which one? All right. And this is how you study with Remar Review. You just get on here. We just take a subject and we break it down till there's nothing left of it and we feel totally confident. Okay, all right. Um, what other questions did I have for you guys? Okay, so I didn't give you the answer yet. I see the answers on the screen. You guys, you guys think you're so smart. You guys think you are so smart, cause you got the answer right. Everybody is putting the poison control center. Of course, of course. Why is the, of course, it's the right answer. Yes, call the poison control center, you guys. All right. Um, you guys probably could take NCLEX really today and pass it, honestly. You've been doing really, really good here. So why is the poison control center better than the ambulance? Because you know, you think about the ambulance, they're coming right away. They are going to come right away. So why would you call the poison control center first? When you could take the child to the hospital? Why would you do that? All right, um, Crystal Marie says, she can start treating the child immediately. And it says, you call them after. You call the poison control center first. Anna says, you, you call them after. You call the poison control center first and then you call nine one one after. Um, Shelley, they can prevent further toxicity. Okay, okay, alright. Um, to determine treatment. Myrna says, to determine treatment. Right, uh, Shannon, they will tell you exactly what to do. Yes, Dee, because they're gonna tell you, be able to tell you how to. Yes, yes, yes. So, and I love that, Vivian. Yes, it's their specialty. It is their specialty. Um, excellent, like, don't, that takes the words out of my mouth. So, if I call the ambulance, I'm going to get a telephone operator. Do you guys know usually what is the qualifications to be an ambulance telephone operator? Do you guys know that? Do you have to have any kind of medical background? Do you? Do you have to, you know, ha- do you have to take a course on um, you know, trauma or first responding or anything like that? I don't think so. So, I could call nine one one and, and this is not me saying, this is for NCLEX, okay? Cause y'all know NCLEX is a perfect world. So, if I call the ambulance and I get some random person and I say, I think my child has just opened up a thermometer and drank the mercury that was inside of it. You know what that person's gonna tell me? They're probably gonna say, I'm sending somebody right away. Just stay there, right? Monitor the child. But if I call the poison control center, they're gonna tell me, you need to do this and you need to do this. Or what kind of thermometer was it? What color was the liquid? It's the same with, you know, Clorox or bleach or whatever. It is their specialty. They will know what you can start doing for your child while you call the ambulance or somebody else calls the ambulance and they're on their way. They can have you to start treating them right away, okay? So, poison control center, it's their specialty. It is their specialty. So in this instance, for NCLEX, you wanna go with the poison control center, alright? Alright, um, what else did I have here? Oh, okay. Okay, so remember, we're gonna talk about the priority nursing interventions for lead poisoning. This is studying, we're studying together, right? So, we talked about the signs and symptoms of a child who has lead poisoning, alright? The signs and symptoms of a child who has lead poisoning. So some of the things that you guys put were abdominal pain, depressed respirations, um, decreased level of consciousness. What do we put? Muscle, muscle weakness, fatigue, right? So, thinking about that. Thinking about a child with lead poisoning, what is your top priority nursing intervention? What is the most important nursing intervention for a child with lead poisoning? What say if you Remar nurses? Oh, this is, you guys better get this one, okay? Because the answer is not in quick facts, but it's in your mind, it's in your instincts, it's in your instincts. It's that first, your first response is usually the right one. So this is a good exercise. Me just asking you guys questions like this is a really good exercise for you having to go with your first answer. Cause you don't have time to think about it, okay? Alright, so, 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 um, mm, the priority nursing intervention. Okay, priority nursing intervention, think about it. I see it, I already see it. You guys, somebody put it. There's a lot of different answers up here, but some of you did put the right answer. So, if I have a child. If I have a child who has a potential lead poisoning. The very most important thing that I want to address as the nurse. The very thing that I need to intervene in and establish is normal breathing patterns, alright? I have to address that airway. Any client, any client, I don't care if they have, you know, um, a hemorrhaging artery. If it says that they have respiratory depression, don't freak out, don't freak out Cynthia, you're ready for this NCLEX. If it says that they have an amputated leg from a, a chainsaw. If it says that half of their head is missing, right? Um, and then they have shortness of breath, I don't care if it's blood everywhere. We need to address that shortness of breath. And so it's the same with this child. They may have abdominal pain, decreased level of consciousness, headaches, fever, whatever. The most important thing for us to establish is normal breathing patterns. We need to establish that respiration, uh, make sure that it's normal. Other things that we wanna do for the lead, um, the lead poisoning pediatric client is we want their blood levels to be normal. We want their blood levels to return to normal. Um, we want to improve the level of consciousness. If they do have increased intracranial pressure, decrease that intracranial pressure with, um, the medications that the doctor has prescribed. Woo, okay, so guess what, guys? We did a really great overview of lead poisoning. I'm going to close our study session, because the thing about our study sessions is they're supposed to be quick and effective. And I would think, I would think that this study session here was ultra, super effective for us. Because we, we literally walked through the patient, the symptoms, the treatment, the priorities, everything like that. Screenings, we did everything in just a short period of time. And so this is how you're supposed to study. It, it doesn't have to be boring and my goodness, it does not have to be long and drawn out. Power sessions, because we're alone together, alright, during this crisis. So, I wanna transition, um, just a little bit and talk about any questions you have about the virtual trainer program. Or how to study with the VT, because, um, it's a new experience for all of us. It really is. It's a new experience for all of us. And so, um, I was just able to really just pull out a topic from quick facts and said, let's get it, let's get it today. So, um, if you enjoy studying with me, hey, click the notification thing. So every time I go live, you know that it's time for you to study, alright? So, any questions about the virtual trainer? Um, let me say this. Uh, for some of you guys who don't know this, but there is a virus going around. It is very scary. It is very scary and it has caused just really a total change about how life is, uh, lived here, all around the globe. Not even in America, just all around the globe. And so, right now, Remar offices are closed. Um, we don't have any customer service. People, there's nobody there answering the phone. Um, there's no one there to pick up your phone calls or anything like that. So, right now, everybody is working from home as far as customer service goes. So, last time I checked, so, let me say this. So that means that if you call, you're gonna hear my voice saying, email us, cause there's nobody to answer the call. Number one, last time we checked, the, there were six hundred emails for Remar, for Team Remar. So please, they're getting back to you guys as soon as they can. They are working so hard, but, um, everybody's emailing us right now. Everybody is trying to get into the virtual trainer. Everybody's trying to renew their virtual trainer. And so we know that you guys, you know, we know you guys need help. Everybody wants to be number one. Everybody wants to be first in line, but we're literally answering the emails in the order that they're received. Okay, so just be patient with us. And, you know, if you missed a deadline or if you need something, trust me, we will work it out for you, okay? So, that's why there may be a delay. If you guys emailed and said, why email on Friday? Remember, we don't have our staff working on the Sabbath, so Saturday, they don't work. And then Sunday, they don't work, because a lot of people keep, you know, Sunday, they go to church on Sunday. So, literally uh, there are a ton of emails for us, especially over the weekend, okay? So please, 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 uh, just give us time, okay? Alright, so, uh, questions about, questions about the virtual trainer or the program? What is the gold star in the virtual trainer? Cool, and I see your question too about the, the VT or DVD. Okay, so the gold star in the virtual trainer is just, um, it's an achievement that you can now get in the VT, where you can get points to, um, encourage you, to motivate you, to be accountable. So literally students in the virtual trainer, there's somebody that has like almost four hundred points. And it's like every time you log in, you can get points. If you log in, uh, like three times a week, you can get points. If you finish all of the before the books arrive activities, you can get points and all these things, right? So, the virtual trainer now has, um, a gaming system to help you stay motivated. Yes, alright? And oh, as well, yeah, so we're doing, uh, for customer service, going back to that. Um, there's also on the website, there is chat on the website as well. So we have, uh, Team Remar doing chat as well. So if you chat them on remarnurse.com, they'll pop up as well, alright? Um, so Audra says, VT is awesome and I have both. Okay, yep, so people ask all the time. Do I need to get the virtual trainer? I have the old DVD package. And I, there was somebody that had put something on the Facebook page earlier in the study group that I thought was so perfect. I literally just wanna read it, but I can't right now. I don't have access to it. But she says, the virtual trainer is for the person who needs to study on the go. Like, if you can't be in front of your DVD player all the time to study, if you can, great. Um, but if you like to have your phone, your tablet, your laptop, wherever, the virtual trainer is great for that. Also, there is accountability for the VT. So, if you have the DVD program, you do it whenever you want. Like, if you wanna study, if you don't wanna study, if you wanna take, you know, six months, eight months, twelve months, whatever, it's there. Um, the virtual trainers for somebody who wants to get their license, like yesterday, like it's a goal, it's a priority. You, you have to log into it. You have to do those quizzes and those videos in order. It does not let you skip around. You have to pass the exams with the minimum ninety-five percent. It, it is, um, it is structure. It is, um, a system. And you do it how it was made to be done, okay? Alright. So, uh, VT is convenient. You guys know that, right? So, um, if you have the DVD program and, and what we're doing with the flash sale right now, literally, you can get the virtual trainer for, um, one twenty-nine if you already have quick facts, right? If you already have quick facts. So that's literally like five dollars, you know, a week or a day, however long you wanna keep the virtual trainer. It's really inexpensive right now. And the sale is gonna go on until April the fourth, I believe. So, um, and then we'll be, you know, transitioning out the sale. Alright, um, so, and people, there are people that are on here right now, they're saying it's better than the DVDs, whatever. Alright, um, I'm still, I'm still in the question, I'm still on the questions before my book arrives, however my book has arrived. I haven't started the VT, I'm afraid. What are you afraid? That I run out of time? Okay, so remember, before the books arrive, literally is that. So once your books arrive, transition to the VT program. Um, and then if you have time after, you can go back to the before the books arrive. The, before the, the before the books arrive section is great, because it allows you to keep studying. Um, right after you make the purchase, you know, you get instant access to the virtual trainer. So that means you can go in there and start answering questions and really have a good time. But when your VT book arrives, this is your priority now. So you need to finish it. Because the content in this book, plus quick facts, is really what you need to pass the exam. Um, the before the books arrives allows you to practice and demonstrate competency. But the lectures are what is ultra important, like the lectures, and that's the difference between, um, people who are just studying with the quick facts, or there are those people who have like, you know, you're doing questions or whatever. The lectures really put it together and give you the big picture. So, I would definitely strong you, strongly suggest you come out of the before the books arrive section and get into the actual NCLEX review. Alright, um, someone says, I completed before my books and waiting on my books. Okay, perfect. So yeah, so it, it gives you something to study while you're waiting for your books to arrive. And the office, the right, right now, uh, we have Sam and LeBron and they're doing an amazing job getting all those orders out. We have hundreds of people ordering the virtual trainer every day. And so, they work so hard to make sure everybody's books get out. And so, once they come, once they leave our office, they are in the hands of USPS to get to you safely. And you wanna make sure that you're gonna be home, because you have to sign for your package, okay? Um, is V, is VT only a ninety day study program? No, VT is actually a six week study program. But you get access to the virtual trainer platform for ninety days. So, once you get access to the program and you get immediate access once you purchase it, you literally have three entire months to do what you wanna do, okay? Um, do what you wanna do, um, in there. So, actually, if you look at the calendar in the virtual trainer, if you look at every day of the six week calendar, I only have you studying, um, twenty-four days. So literally, it's a twenty-four day program, okay? So, you can do it and you have so much time, um, so much time. You have literally three months to do twenty-four study sessions. I think you can do it, alright? Um, if years have passed and you feel like you lack content, what would you recommend? I have already failed and I'm not working, so I'm afraid. Okay, um, yeah, it, um, you know, it doesn't matter. When, I don't know when you say years, um, how long years have been. But we have had students who've been out of school for ten years, fifteen, twenty. We have students who, you know, have been out of school since the seventies. So, that to me is not a barrier unless it's one for you. So, we can make that challenge of you being out of school as big or as little as you want it to be. Um, the thing about it is, can you study and retain information? Can you look at material, especially if you, if you've been studying with me today? Can you follow along with what we did today? Because if you can follow along and it makes sense, um, then you can pass NCLEX. Because this is a book based on, I mean, this is a test based off of what's in a book. And so, if you're able to learn, you absolutely can pass this test, okay? Uh, oh, two thousand and fifteen? That's like yesterday. That's fine, absolutely. You're in a great place. Uh, you're, if you're a two thousand and fifteen graduate, you are absolutely in a great place. Um, Ms. Regina, do we need to finish the test in VT before the books arrive? Thank you. Um, the before the books arrive section, again, is optional. It's there. You know, I think you should definitely take advantage of it, uh, because it's a free resource to you in the virtual trainer program. But put your, put your priority on the lectures, okay? Put your priority on the lectures and then go back to the virtual trainer if you have time, okay? Um, like me out of school for ten years and only VT served me. It's the best. Yes, I, I thank you so much. Alright, um, I brought the VT already. Do I need to buy the quick facts? Um, okay, if you brought the virtual trainer and you got the full program, you didn't pick, already has quick facts. Um, then, if you, if you did this, the one forty-nine price, you get both books. So you should get the virtual trainer and the five star quick facts. Make sure your quick facts has five stars on them. This is the newest updated version of this, um, of this resource. If you only pay one twenty-nine, then you'll just get one book, okay? Um, and if you don't have the quick facts book, I highly recommend you getting it. I mean, this is a companion to this. So, there's a lot of information in the quick facts book that you won't find, alright? Um, in the virtual trainer and vice versa. Like, there's a lot of information in the virtual trainer, it's not in quick facts. So they really do go together. And I know a lot of people that are watching this, you don't even know what the virtual trainer is. I, I understand that. I literally understand that. Um, so, check out the website, Remar Nurse. Go to my website, remarnurse.com, so you can literally see the benefits of having this virtual trainer. And I don't care how long you've been out of school, this has something in there for you, alright? Um, Ms. Regina, I did the DVDs, love it. I'm doing VT, I'm excited. Okay, perfect. And I don't, I mean, it's very common. Um, it's very common for people to do both programs, because I had the DVD program and then we transitioned to the virtual trainer. And so, some of you had the DVDs for a long time, or you know, just a, a month or so, and you really wanted to see what the new program was like. And so now you're in both, and you get, you get the benefits of both. Um, when you purchase the virtual trainer, I saw your question, you have ninety days in your first subscription, but it's not a delayed subscription. So when you purchase the virtual trainer, you need to understand that you will get access to it right away. Another thing I wanna say about the virtual trainer is that it is subscription based. So that means that you will automatically be charged the renewal price after your ninety day subscription. It's just like Netflix or Hulu or whatever, it's a subscription model. So, if you want to not be charged, you need to cancel the subscription under your settings. And if you need help doing that, Team Remar will help you. But we send out an email and, um, I pay for my virtual trainer, so I get the emails. And like, two or three days, I'll get an email saying, hey, your subscription is about to renew. And da, 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 three days. And I get another email, hey, your subscription is about to renew. So you guys need to read those emails and do what you need to do. If you need to cancel it, if you need to renew it, you need to do it at that time, okay? Um, it is, so, we dropped the price of the It is, so we dropped the price of the renewal. Somebody asked, what's the price of the renewal? We dropped the price of the renewal down to sixty-nine dollars. Now, this is where we run into um some sort of confusion because if you purchased the virtual trainer before we dropped the price down, then you signed up for the a hundred and five dollar renewal. So at the time of your purchase, you signed up for the hundred and five dollar renewal. But we reduced the prices amongst everything that was happening. We dropped our prices for you guys to make it easier for you to get the resources past NCLEX. So that's fine. We are going to extend that sixty-nine dollar renewal to everybody. But you need to contact us and let us know so that we can get you that price. Alright? Because if you don't, it's a subscription. So it's gonna take out the price that you signed up for. Alright? It's gonna take out that a hundred and five dollars if you don't cancel it. Alright? If you don't cancel it, you have to do that. And we can't cancel it. We can't go in and cancel your subscriptions without your permission. So the team literally has to receive something before it happens that says, hey, cancel my subscription cuz we can't do that. Alright, um. My subscription's in on a, my subscription ends on April twelfth. What if I wanna renew it on a later time? Will it still be sixty-nine dollars? Yeah, it should be. Okay? So you need to cancel your subscription now. And then when you're ready to renew, we can give you a link that will help you to renew it. Okay? Um, if the post office said they returned your package back to sender, how can I get it back? Uh, well, if they returned it back to us, then it will come back to us. And so you need to contact Team Remar and so that somebody can know that your package is on the way back to us so that we can be on the lookout for it. Alright? Um, no, if, if you cancel it, if you physically cancel yourself, if you physically cancel yourself from the VT, there will, it, it won't have a way to charge you. It, it won't if you physically cancel. Like I said, I'm paying for the virtual trainer right now and it charges me because I have not canceled it. Alright? Um, okay. And then someone says, um, where is the settings I wanna cancel? Look underneath your profile. Look underneath your profile. And underneath your profile, it should be um billing or settings. Underneath your profile where your picture is and you can change your language and, you know, all that stuff, it should be there. Okay? Um, and receive the link. Okay? So you can cancel your own subscription as well by going to that profile section and canceling your subscription and then Team Remar will send you the link. Okay? So no, Emily, we're talking about the renewal price. We're talking about the renewal price for the, for the virtual trainer cuz a lot of people have it and they wanna renew past the ninety days. And so the renewal price is sixty-nine dollars. Okay? Um, yes, but that virtual trainer price right now, we're doing the sale still. So the sale will take place until April the fourth, the April the fourth. Okay?
I took it seven times and failed, but at this price, maybe I should try again.
Absolutely. You should absolutely try again. Absolutely. There is no, um, there is no, you know, the, the time limit or the amount of times you take NCLEX really is an individual journey. So you can't look at anybody else and say, well, they only pa, they passed in three tries. So I need to stop here. Like no, it's, it's however much you wanna put into it. It is an investment. Nurse, becoming a nurse in general is an investment. You invest into your schooling, you invest into your books. And so the testing process is no different. Um, but I do find that when students make the effort to invest in the process, they take it more seriously. And honestly, been doing this for over ten years now. The stuff that people give for free, they don't value as much. They don't. But when somebody pays for something, when they spend their last dollar on it, when they spend their last dime on it, they make it a priority. They really, they really, really do. Okay? Um, is the VT and Quick Facts enough material to study? Somebody who graduated twenty years ago. Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I can't, I, I don't know what you guys want me to say. Like, it doesn't matter how long you've been out of school. Like it doesn't matter if you have the determination, if you have the determination to press forward and you wanna make this a goal, you can do it. You can do it. And the virtual trainer, I'm just gonna tell you guys, I'm gonna be straightforward. This is the best program out there. There is no, there is no other NCLEX review videos that look like the virtual trainer, that sound like the virtual trainer, that has this type of accountability. There's none. There's not one. And so um, I'm so confi, like I'm just so confident in this program that literally I get on here every day and talk about it and there are people that will see it. And because of their history with NCLEX, because, you know, they've been through all the other resources, they've been there, they've done that. They see the immediate value of the virtual trainer. They see that it's different. They can tell the difference right away. And then there's other people that um, that, they don't know. You know, you just, when you get into this space of NCLEX, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. And uh, there's other people just don't know. They don't, the virtual trainer, they have no concept of it. They haven't been exposed to anything like it. And so it's easy to compare the virtual trainer to a product like UWorld or Kaplan or something. But if you know, if you really know those products, you know, the virtual trainer is in a whole nother league. Like it's in a whole nother league than anything else that's out there. So yes, if you've been out of school for twenty years, um, it can help you. So Clarice said, I'm living testimony, the first generation VT users. Yes. Perfect. Um, uh, Tasha said, this is the best and most affordable program. Kevin, what'd you say? Um, hi Regina, I brought another NCLEX prep about two months before I found out about Remar. I listened to all your podcasts. Wow, okay? As well as YouTube and everything on Facebook. I'm going to see how this review I purchased goes. But I would love to provide a testimony because you are a big part of my motivation and study habits. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you so much. Uh, and that's, that's really good to hear and that's why I get on here. Uh, you listening to the podcast though? That's crazy. Um, that's crazy. Uh, okay, so um, I graduated ten years ago. It's kind of our refresher course. I highly recommend it. Hats off to you. Alright, perfect. Um, thank you so much, John. If we purchased a VT, is it a website we are able to access? Uh, yes, the virtual trainer has its own platform that if you have the internet, um, if you have the internet on your phone or your tablet, you will go to the website and you will put in your credentials, your username and your password. And um then you will be able to enter it. Okay? Alright, so yes, and no CDs? No, you asked, is it a CD? Do we need to play on the computer? No, it's not. It's not a DVD. No, it's not. And that's why we transitioned out. You guys know I used to sell the four DVDs and the four books and that was my staple program. That was my staple program. Um, but we transitioned out of that for more accountability for, you know, the DVDs. They were just like, ah, they were, they were amazing, but trying to get them to China. And I mean, we were literally sending them out everywhere. It was very tough cuz then people wouldn't have, you know, the, the technical support or the DVD players wouldn't be available in their country. And they're like, we're like, they're like, I'm in Africa. We don't have. So the virtual trainer, the virtual trainer is the, the better way, the better way. Start at remar nurse dot com, remar nurse dot com. Alright? Okay, so what will be sent in the package? If you get the virtual trainer, you will get two books for the price of one forty-nine. Alright, the price before this was three seventy-eight. We dropped it down to one forty-nine. So you get the virtual trainer workbook, the Quick Facts book, and then you get the online program. Alright? And the online program is physically like, uh, it's like a full comprehensive course of lecture material, homework, practice exams, um, just activities. And so the majority of the program is online and then you get the two books. Okay? You get the two books. If you wanna sign up for it, listen, if you wanna sign up for it, go to remar nurse dot com. Remar, you guys know the channel, you guys know the name, remar nurse dot com. Okay? Remar nurse dot com. And that's how you'll get your virtual trainer program. And you literally can start it tonight. If you sign up for it today, you will have access to it instantly. Um, check out remar nurse dot com for First Shift because when we had our staff meeting yesterday, um, Sam and shipping said that we were running low on First Shift books. So I don't even know if I have anymore right now. So check out the website um to see if the First Shift book is available. And I don't have any here. First Shift is the book that I wrote for nurses who pass NCLEX and they're, and they want to transition very wo, very well into being a new nurse on the floor. So I go over like the principles of interviewing, how to introduce yourself to a patient, how to, you know, prioritize your work schedule, all these things in First Shift. Alright? So, um, why is it? Okay, so ninety days is a subscription, immediate access. The renewal price is sixty-nine dollars. If, again, this is, this is something I talked about before, but some of you guys may be just jumping on. If you see the a hundred and five dollar renewal price, it is because when you signed up for the virtual trainer, like we, we've had students that, that has been, that have been in the virtual trainer since November when we opened it up. And so um, if you signed up for it in November, December, or January, then you were in fact signing up for the one oh five renewal price. And that's the price that you signed up for. So the virtual trainer keeps you into your plan. A virtual trainer doesn't, you know, it doesn't distinguish or move people around for what they, you know, it just doesn't do that. So it's okay. We will extend the sixty-nine dollar renewal price to you. No problem. But you got to cancel your original subscription renewal price so that we can send you a link to sign up again. That's all. Okay? Um, C Bangers said, do you have to use the ninety days online now or later? Uh, you gotta use it now. You gotta use it now. It's immediate access. We cannot delay the start date. That's the accountability of the virtual trainer. You sign up, you get started right away, but you have ninety days. So you literally have three months. So April, May, June. So if you sign up now, you wouldn't lose access until June. Alright? That's three months from now. Alright? So, um, uh, it starts immediately. Yes. Okay? Someone says, I will be renewing it. I need to finish it. I'm loving it. Okay, perfect. So check your subscription price and make sure you contact Team Remar. Alright, if you need help doing that. Okay, guys? So is that, is there anything else? Is there anything else? Okay? Let me know here. We are talking virtual trainer. Um, it is, it is just a regular Tuesday here. It is Tuesday, right? It's just a regular Tuesday. We're studying for NCLEX every day. Sometimes you don't leave the house every day, every day. It, it's just, you know, but this is what we have to do. So honestly, if you guys are leaving the house, be safe, be healthy out there. Make sure you're washing your hands. If you have senior citizens in your life, let them know that, you know, some stores are open early just for the senior citizens. So remind them of that. My mom is taking advantage of the senior hours. She is up like five thirty trying to shop. So we have to protect ourselves. We have to protect our families. Um, we have to do our part. And so right now, for the majority of us, the, our part is staying home and staying safe. And I love you guys too. You guys don't know um, how much purpose you give my life, honestly, honestly, for Mark and myself. And I know you guys, I know you guys are asking for Mark cuz you want him to do, uh, what you, what do, what do you guys want? I know you want the prayer. You want the faith over fear. I, I'm on him. I'm on him. I told him, I'm like, the Remar nurses, they want you to be praying, man. They wanna see, they wanna hear you praying. We need a, we need a Bible study. So I'm gonna try to get him um to give us that, right? So that we can incorporate that into our daily, uh, you know, our daily sessions. Cuz it's, it's tough being here. A lot of people are so discouraged right now. We have this, you know, we have this wonderful, wonderful profession of nurses where people are, you know, they're calling for nurses and they, they want nurses, you know, now, 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 we need nurses. But there's other industries where if you are, you know, um, if you're in a service industry, if you work in a hotel or a restaurant, there are many people who are sitting at home wondering like, how am I gonna, you know, pay my bills? And so we have so much to be grateful for. We really do. Because we are entering the profession that literally the world could be, you know, going through the most chaotic times and nursing is still like the top profession to be in. And so it just tells you like how valuable you guys are. You guys, you have no idea. If you are a nurse, you literally are, you know, like a national treasure. Whether you feel that way, whether you're treated that way, you really are. The knowledge that you guys have is so powerful. The skills that you guys have, billionaires, like everybody on here, you guys are literally um, just like a, a wealth of resources. You guys have money-making potential that you have no idea of yet. It, it's just like, it's, it's very humbling. It's very humbling. And I've been in a room where, you know, when we went to Jamaica, there were seven hundred nurses in a room at a Remar class. And it was just like unbelievable. Like, you know, the energy, the power, the, the, just the influence that you guys have, you just don't know yet. But you'll get there. You'll get there. You're gonna get your nursing license and you're going to see just how, you know, amazing and what a difference you will make in somebody's life. You will make a huge difference in somebody's life. And so you really can't put a price on that. And so I need you guys to embrace the mentality that you are special. Okay? Because what you feel is special, you will take care of, you will invest in, you will spend time on. And so your knowledge, um, you know, your health, these are things that you guys have to value. Okay? Yes, Remar nurses will be flooding this field in twenty twenty. Yes, by God's grace, you guys will. That's my prayer, for sure. For sure. Okay? Well, we had a great time, guys, and I hope that we can do it again soon. I really do. And um, you know, we're here. We're doing our very best from home to try to help everybody stay on track and stay focused. I'm gonna get out of here, but I wanna just tell you one thing. You can, you will, and you must pass NCLEX.